Wow, that was pretty violent.
Call the order. Swamp Scott School Committee Regular Session Meeting Wednesday, February 13th, 7:00 PM. Will we all please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yes, Joe will be arriving any time soon.
Alright, so we can start off with public comment. Is there any tonight? No, there is no public comment. So we can move on to For the Love of Learning. Tonight, we have a video production of a scene from Macbeth, from Ms. Thomas.
Ms. Caitlin Thomas.
Ms. Caitlin Thomas, welcome.
Chair of, Department Chair of the English Department at the high school.
Hi, so I would just, quick thing about the assignment. The students were asked to basically interpret some in an original manner, a scene from Macbeth, which we had just finished studying. And they came up with some really interesting interpretations. So here's one of my groups. I have Max Scanlon, Riley Scanlon, Autumn LaRiviere, Maddie Winkowski, and Ella Slavnikoff. So come on down, guys, we want to see something about it.
So our, we did an interpretation of Act Four, Scene One, which is basically a scene which portrays Macbeth returning to like his sighting of the witches and he attempts to receive more information to like secure his kingship.
Alright, let's take it away.
You need to play the video.
The cat has me out on three occasions. Three times, and the guinea pig has whacked once.
My feline friend yells, "It's time, tis time."
Round about the culdrin go.
Throw in a cat's claw and a squirrel's paw, I hate those filthy animals.
Let's add some more, the skin of a witch or the finger of a baby born in a ditch.
Well now that was fun, it's finally done.
That looks better.
Here, pass some treats for your trouble.
Don't quit, you can't risk it for the biscuit.
Something wicked this way comes.
What up dogs, happy feline today? I don't care if you destroy the pillows, rip apart the shoes, ruin furniture, or pee on the bed. Weird dogs, I ask you to answer my questions. Answer me what I ask you.
Speak, demand.
We will answer.
Would you rather hear this from us or our owners?
Fetch them, let me see them.
Put in the feathers of the bird who has eaten her night eggs.
Answer me, you alpha fish.
He knows all the fish in the sea.
Whoever you are, you know what I fear. A little bark, or meow, one blow, blow, blow.
The first fish will be schooled.
If cats had three years, I'd hear thee. Then let McGruff live, I do not need to be afraid of him. That is a bull's roar. Yet my heart throbs to know one thing, will Banquo's sons ever be king? I demand you stay until meet my feet, or you will be cursed. Why seeks the culprit, and what noise is this? You look like Banquo's ghost, go away, your covenants be hissed. Filthy dogs, why are you showing me these kings? Will this keep happening? Another king? I don't want to see this anymore. Yet another appears and shows me a reflection of more kings. I hate the kings of all these territories. Now I see that this is Banquo's posterity mocking me. What is this so?
Why are you surprised? This is true. Come, fellow loves, let's cheer Macbeth up and show him her tricks.
You're kidding, they're gone? Will this moment be remembered forever?
What do you want?
Saw you the weird dogs?
No, my lord.
Didn't they check with you?
No, my lord.
They are cashed off, they don't trust the liars, I'm telling you, who came here?
Those were new zucchini pigs, said McGruff has gone to the beach.
Now when I want to talk the talk, I'll walk the walk. I'm off to raid McGruff's territory and take his prize toys. But no more sights, I don't want to lose sight of my catnip kitty treats. Bring me to those I seek.
That was awesome. You look like you had so much fun doing that and then watching it again. Yes, really was.
So whose idea was it to use animals? That was Max's idea, and then so whose pets were they?
Yeah, whose animals were they?
Spread among the.
Who owns the toddler?
It's so great how, it's so, so, one of my kids did, did this scene for, reenacted it for a class here. And I just, I love how different this was. Like, and I thought hers was pretty creative. It's just awesome because, because it's like enough of the text, but yeah.
Well done.
Thanks for sharing.
We would never have an opportunity to see that if you didn't come and share, thank you.
So next we have Community Announcements, so maybe we'll start with Joe, since it's his birthday.
Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, dear Joe. Happy birthday to you.
Thank you, thank you.
Wow, yeah, why are you here?
Devotion.
Dedication.
Do you have any comments you want to make, public comment, Community Announcements, I'm sorry?
We had the great Blue Ribbon Ceremony, I think, I thought that went really well. The kids loved it, and all the speakers were really great. And yeah, it was pretty, it was a good time.
Thanks for saving the day, for the hijab.
Yes.
The Step Team was awesome. You know, personally, I think we should have had them go on last because they're just hard to follow. For any, for any group, they're hard to follow.
The governor was not joking when he said why.
He was not joking, they are hard to follow. And I'm looking forward to more from them. And I think, I know graduation, they're going to perform, and maybe they might have another performance before that.
Excellent.
No, just quickly, the snow days, hopefully we can get the kids and the faculty out early. Especially the seniors.
Around time.
Well, the seniors aren't affected by the snow days, that's the beauty. We can have as many snow days.
Snow days would be great.
Suzanne? Suzanne?
Talk about the MSBA later, that's our big news.
Karen, do you have anything?
I was just going to say that I thought the Blue Ribbon Ceremony was, I mean, I feel like I'm proud of the district a lot. You know, graduations and plays and events, but this, I think, was the top.
Yeah, I have to say, I, the energy in the room for the Blue Ribbon and the students, like the, just the energy, the culture, the students were awesome, the performances. I thought the chorus did, is it corral or chorus? They ended it very nicely, though, they did a really beautiful job. So I, I was glad to be able to attend that. I also was able to go, my child was in the Production of Grease.
Yes.
School, which I have to say was amazing, as usual. The middle school does a really nice job. Kayla LaClerc was the director. And I love that Mr. Kalishman kind of, came out all four nights, all four performances and did a piece. I really think that's, it was just great. I think it's challenging for kids to join theater sometimes, to feel like they can do that. It was just really nice for him to kind of be a part of it, too. And the eighth graders were amazing.
Yes, and the high schools getting some talent.
Yeah, they really are, it was really a great show.
Little known fact, Mr. Kalishman was practicing at any given moment in the hallways during the days. We have it on videotape.
It was, he definitely got a, you know, were applauding him, and it was exciting, so it was very cool.
Okay, so we're on to Superintendent's Report.
Great, thank you. So I just want to highlight the fact that at our last meeting, I spoke about the Greater Boston Parents Family and Friends of Lesbians and Gays P-Flag coming out to do the Professional Development Day on January 24th. In addition to that, we did have the Community Forum on Wednesday evening, February 6th, in the auditorium, about approximately 20 people were in attendance, including a few children. It was a really powerful guest speaker panel. At the Professional Development Day, there was one speaker, a parent, and at this Community Forum, there were two parents and a transgender woman, middle school teacher in Wellesley. And Ted was there, I don't know if you have anything to add to that event?
Personally, I learned a lot. And for the parents particularly to stand up and tell their story, it was beaming confidence in how proud they were. I wish some more people showed up.
Yeah, what was most powerful, and what I remember, is there was one particular person in the audience that was really crying and said that she was so moved by the panelists' stories and she just didn't understand it because she was here because she wanted to get educated. And I think that's the general sense of the people that attended. I've now seen the presentation twice and I continue to learn. And so I am scheduling with them an annual Community Forum because I do think it's important to do this every year. I'd like to do it in October next year, so it's the beginning of the year. The highlighted portion of my report tells you that the slide presentation they did is in your folder. It is not for public consumption, the teachers have it, but they've asked that we not distribute it. So it is in your folders if you want to take a look at it. So the Director of Teaching and Learning position update is that, as I had said previously, it was posted on January 3rd, the posting closed on January 24th. We had a total of 39 applicants for the position. We have formed an interview committee of Mrs. Julie Delillo, the Human Resources Director, Latony Mackey, the Director of Digital Learning, Martha Raymond, Director of Student Services, and myself. There are phone screenings still occurring at this time, but we have approximately 10 candidates for the first round of interviews, which will take place on February 28th and March 4th right now. I just wanted to, again, highlight the National Blue Ribbon Award celebration and reception. It was definitely a proud moment for the district and for the community. And I want to really shout out to the administrative team at the high school, along with the students and the staff, that helped plan such a spectacular event. I think the planning, I know the planning was daunting, but right down to the red carpet, the staff walking in, all of the performances, Joseph you speaking, the student MCs. I just thought, I did say at one point, I could die right now and be professionally fulfilled. I couldn't stop smiling for at least two days. It just was a great feeling for our community and our school community to be recognized and as great as we know it is. And I was proud of the students and the audience who were just, the energy, as you said, Gargi, was something I haven't felt for a long time and long overdue for this community. The other event that I did attend is Reach Arts, had an open house in a tee. It took place on January 31st from 3:00 to 5:00. Several members of the business office and the Superintendent's Office attended. What was great for me is I've never been in that building, and to see the spaces that are available and the third floor, even though it's not ready yet. You know, what we were thinking about is every summer, we have our leadership retreat, and if the wifi were working there, I would love to have a leadership retreat there and have it catered, you know, have the food brought in. But it was, it's really a neat space, and I, like I said, I had nothing to compare it to, but they really did a nice job that day having that open house. I wanted to talk about Kindergarten Information Night that Mrs. Raymond ran. It took place on January 29th, it was very well attended. And I just wanted to remind people that Martha Raymond does kindergarten registration differently now. It's in-person, it's in the Superintendent's Conference Room at the middle school. It's on Monday and Tuesday, March 18th and 19th, from 7:30 AM to 11:30 AM. And I wasn't sure.
We have another date, too.
Okay.
It's on the website, in the afternoon.
So do you want to add anything about Kindergarten Information Night?
I think it went really, really well. Usually the favorite question is, what school am I going to be assigned to? But that wasn't really the biggest topic of the night. I think it was just people really, you know, looking how to have their children be prepared to come and they're a really excited group of families that will be joining us next year. So that's exciting, and I think doing registration in person allows us to give a little personal connection to families that have questions. So it really worked well last year, I'm really hoping that it'll work well this year. And Alyssa will be part of that now, too.
It's a lot of work for you and your team to sit in that room, but you, the beauty is, if people are missing paperwork, it's a face-to-face, they can bring it in the next day. So I think the packets were much more complete doing it this way. So that will continue. And last but not least, I have some great news tonight. I'm going to take my notes out of order, but I did meet with the Stanley School staff on February 7th in the afternoon and shared this news. And it was supposed to be the same evening that I met with parents and guardians at Stanley, but I ended up meeting this morning to announce that the Hadley School interim principal, Mrs. Kathleen Huntley, is being appointed as the next permanent Stanley School principal beginning on March 18th. I'm going to give a little update to the committee and to the public that doesn't know the story. So last October, when we were interviewing for Ms. Bebcheck's maternity leave, we did form an interview committee. Mrs. Raymond was part of it, Ms. Jennifer Hunt from Clark School, that principal, Ms. Bebcheck was part of it, Mrs. Julie Delillo, the Director of Human Resources, and Mrs. Marshall was part of it as well. At the conclusion of the interview process, Mrs. Huntley was unanimously appointed the interim position for Hadley School. I have talked about this this morning, Kiko was there this morning, that this was the longest interview I've ever conducted, it's been three months, that she's been, in essence, interviewing for this position. And we're really excited to have her moving over to Stanley, and also to welcome Ms. Bebcheck back. Prior to coming to Swamp Scott, she served as principal at the Abbott School, which is a grade three to five school in Westford, from 2015 to 2018. And prior to that, she was Assistant Principal at the Abbott and Navnasset Schools, which were K to two schools, from 2013 to 2018. Before becoming an administrator, she taught science in all levels, including as an adjunct professor at Merrimack College. So the schedule is this, that Ms. Bebcheck is scheduled to return from maternity leave on March 4th. Mrs. Huntley will spend that week both, working both at Hadley and Stanley Schools, transitioning to both, and then will take over at Stanley officially on March 18th. We have also scheduled, as a result of this morning's meeting at Stanley, on March 6th, an evening meet and greet where children will come with their parents. Mrs. Longan will be there, Mrs. Huntley will be there, I will be there. So it'll be the first opportunity for parents to speak with Mrs. Huntley and to get to meet some of the children. I really, really am thrilled to have Kathleen remain on our leadership team. She's a strong voice with lots of experience, and I'm really excited, so congratulations.
So, thank you so much, I am beyond excited to be here. I love school, that's kind of who I am. I love to work, and school's my work, so it makes every day, you know, really a very good day. It's been an absolute joy to be working in this district, whether I'm involved with leadership or a five-year-old. I can see that decisions are made based on what is in the best interest of students. And when that is the core of what you believe, you make the right decisions. Not that we don't make little mistakes sometimes, but that's what we're supposed to be basing our decisions on. And the direction of this district and the decision-making that I've seen this far, I mean, it's true, three-month interview, but it kind of goes both ways, and I've just loved what I've experienced and what I've seen. You know, Hadley has been an environment where people are collaborative, they're caring, committed. There's my three Cs, I love alliteration. And there's a real balance with rigor and bringing out the best in students and having fun. And I think that fun, you know, just as, as the students in their performance said, the fun is the root of the learning. If you make it fun, they will come, you know? And it's been a wonderful three months. Kind of sad to leave, but I'm excited to be going to Stanley and to be in the capacity of principal without the interim piece, even though that has been wonderful. I can't thank Superintendent Angelakis and the committee and school committee and everybody I've met. I mean, it has been amazing. I go home and I say, not only is it at the ocean, which was a draw for me, I have to admit. It certainly makes the drive worthwhile when your day is full of the goodness, you know, that I've been experiencing, it's just been great, I couldn't be happier. Now I need a little vacation house a little closer, that's what I keep telling my husband. It's like, what? That was not in the cards. Every now and then, I like to keep him on his toes. Thank you so much, I'm delighted to be here. Looking forward to getting to you.
Welcome. Amy has requested that you get a picture so we can send it to, right, send it to the reporter. Congratulations.
Superintendent hugs.
And that concludes my report. Okay, so we now have the School Business Administrator, Martha. So this will be the review of the FY20 school budget and then the vote.
Yeah, so I think the agenda has it a little bit out of order. We're going to do the revolving funds first, and then the athletic fees, and then the last thing that we'll do will be the FY20.
Of course, okay.
So at the January 23rd, which seemed so long ago, I had promised the next presentation would include revolving funds and grants. At that point in time, I still didn't have enough information. So the revolving funds that we're going to focus on tonight are ones that we utilize to help offset operating costs. So athletic fees, Athletic Revolving Fund, the School Building Rental Fund, Extended Day, and the preschool program are all funds that help support the operating budget. And we're also going to discuss a little bit of the non-resident tuition revolving account that we'd like to establish, and then I'll do a quick review of our grants. So back in January, I believe it was January 16th meeting, that the Athletic Director, Mrs. Farley, came and made her recommendations for fee increases for athletic user fees. And the committee tasked her with going back and sharpening her pencil and looking at the budgets and working collaborative with me to come up with a final recommendation. And so her final recommendation was to introduce, at the middle school level, a tiered fee structure. And it's really only one tier, it's $200 per sport, except for hockey, which would increase to $375, with no family cap at the middle school. At the high school, the fee would increase to $375 per sport, and the family cap would increase to $1,875, meaning the first five sports a family would pay for, but anything after that, incrementally after that, they would not pay at all. We would continue to offer financial assistance to families that need it. We currently use the federal guidelines for free and reduced lunch for financial assistance. The fee is waived 100% for any family that qualifies for free lunch, and the fee is waived at 30% for reduced lunch. And of course, the district, we will continue to work with families that request hardship waivers. So the athletic projected revenue, I did some modeling, so I did the FY20 revenue model based on FY18 participation data. Previously, I calculated an effective discount rate because not everyone pays, and people hit the cap. So the effective discount rate was about 21%. So the proposed increase is estimated to generate an additional $44,750. This will close the gap closer to a 50/50 split, which was a kind of a goal the school committee had set for us back in January, that they'd like the operating budget to fund 50% of the expense associated with our athletic programs and the revolving fund to support 50% of the expense. And this gets us closer to that split. As you can see in this slide, the split has been as low as 34%, and so it's been creeping up in the right direction, and it's going to be, it's estimated to be 48.2% in FY20. Just some actual data there for the cost, the total cost of running the program. FY17, it was about $680,000, FY18, it jumped up to $744,000. You know, the difference year over year, without going back through the revolving fund to identify what it is, I know that in FY18, the hockey team made it very far in the state tournament. That could have contributed to the increase. I also know that there was some uniform updates and other things that came into play, so that might have added to the increase year over year from 17 to 18. FY19 was budgeted a bit low in comparison to what actually was spent in FY18, and FY20 budget is more in line with what we actually spent in FY18. So I am comfortable with the revenue projections and the expense projections at this point in time. Our revenue projection is $326,000, or actually $361,000, and we're projecting to use $336,000 from the operating, from the revolving fund, which would leave us a little bit of a balance in that revolving fund. You never want to budget to use every single penny of revolving fund money because things can happen, you know, for example, this year, our Thanksgiving Day football game, which is normally a very big revenue generator for us in terms of other revenue, was very poorly attended because of the weather. And that was almost a $10,000 loss in revenue. So you never want to budget these to be zero-zero, you want to leave a little cushion for things that happen, the unforeseen. So moving on to School Building Rental, we started this year with a surplus balance of about $21,000. Right now, looking at where we are for billing FY19 compared to FY20, we're down about $10,000 year over year. I did reach out to a few people to try and figure out what's going on. I think that there's some events that have happened or some ongoing things that have not been billed yet, so that might be part of what's driving that delta. As I discussed with the committee of the whole, I am unclear why we're charging custodial fees but not charging them to the revolving fund. So this is one that, from a standpoint of how it's going to support the FY20 budget, we budgeted to have it support the operating expenses by $35,000 for utility costs. I'm confident that the fund will be able to do that in FY20. confident that the fund will be able to do that in FY20. I would like to look at what we're charging for fees, who we're discounting, how we're marketing our facilities, because we've got some great facilities here that could be utilized by local businesses or community organizers. So I really want to take a deeper dive on this to see what we're doing, and maybe come back later with some recommendations on what we should do in terms of fee structure or process changes. The extended day program operates in our three elementary schools and a program in the middle school. The extended day program helps support the operating budget. We charge about $100,000 a year to offset heat and utilities for the three elementaries and the middle school to this fund. FY19, this current year, we have seen an increase in competition. The Y opened a program not too far from the Hadley Elementary School, and so we have seen a bit of a drop-off in participation at Hadley that may tick back up over the course of the year. This is another one that I would like to continue to review, the fee structures and expenses, but in terms of what we have budgeted to have support for FY20, I'm comfortable with the $100,000 that we have in there, and I will continue to monitor it, and if anything changes, of course, I'll report back to the committee. The preschool revolving fund. The preschool offers three different programs. There's a five-day option, a three-day option, and a two-day option, with an option to extend the day, which we call Lunch Bunch. So Mrs. Raymond does a phenomenal job with the program, and she came up with a proposed fee increase. It's very nominal. You can see on the left of the screen, the current fee for five days is $400 a month or $4,000. It's a 10-month program. It's not a full year. It's not a year-round program. It's $4,000. It's a nominal, a $200 increase year over year. For the three-day option, it's gonna go from $2,400 to $2,520, and for the two-day option, it goes from $1,600 to $1,680. We're not advocating or recommending any change to the Lunch Bunch structure, so for 12 to 1, to have your child's day, it would be $10 per day. It would continue to be $10 per day, and from 12 to 2, it would continue to be $15 a day. As far as looking at the revolving fund, the FY20 budget doesn't, does have the assumption of a small revenue increase. So you can see the revenue budget for FY19 is $100,000. It's $105,000 for next year. The next line there, the non-resident tuition, that is funds that we're currently collecting for non-resident students that participate in our in-district programs. So we've done a great job of building capacity in the district with programs to support different learning disabilities. And where we have excess capacity and we have neighboring towns that have a child that may need that, that could do well in that program, there's a process for us, you know, doing a review and seeing if it's a good fit and accepting them in. We do charge them tuition for that. So right now, that tuition revenue is sitting on the town side, because we did not have prior approval from town meeting to have a non-resident tuition fund, revolving fund. We did budget to have that revenue and have expense go against it in FY19, and we are working collaboratively with the town to make sure that we're made whole on that. So at the annual town meeting in May, we will be requesting to have town meeting vote to help, to approve that non-tuition, non-resident tuition revolving fund. So I did budget to have that next year in FY20. So our assumption is that those students will continue to come to Swamscot, and that we will be able to offset that revenue with charging some of our expenses for those programs to that revolving fund. So, wrapping up revolving funds, athletics, there is a new fee, rate fee structure to approve, the school building rental one. I do want to review the current process. Part of that review will be to look at peer communities, what other communities are renting out their facilities for. We have a wonderful auditorium here. Are rates too high? Are they too low? Are we not, why are we not attractive if we're not renting that out every weekend to dance recitals come April to June? So I want to look at that kind of thing. And then also, what's our process for billing? You know, are we waiting to the very end to bill? Are we pre-billing? Are we requiring a deposit? So there's a lot of unknown there for me that I'd like to review. So I propose to come back to the committee with some more information on that, and we could do a mid-year increase or wait a full year. Same with the extended day program. I'd like to continue to monitor the revenue expense for that program and determine if the rate structure is based on the expense, or if there are other things that we should be doing or looking at in terms of the rate structure for that program. And then preschool program, I hope I meant to delete that line from the slide, but we've already determined the rate structure for that, so we'll be voting on that tonight. And then I already spoke a little bit about the non-resident tuition account. So the last slide in this presentation is to talk a little bit about our federal grants, or all of our grants, actually. So I have them segmented by federal, state, and private. So our federal grants are really our entitlement grants. They're based on our enrollment and our demographic composition. As you can see, our awards year-over-year for Title I, 18 to 19, or excuse me, 17 to 18, was pretty flat. 18 to 19 jumped up. For FY20, I just assumed a flat. I didn't assume any increase, but more than likely, there will be an increase. I just didn't want to be aggressive in terms of budgeting support. Same thing for Title II-A and Title IV, well, IV-A, I actually, I don't have visibility on that one, on whether we'll get that money in FY19 or not. The IDEA grant, again, I budgeted that to be flat. That really is based on the number of students with disabilities in the district. And same thing with early childhood. I did want to include, you know, Mrs. Raymond suggested this, and I appreciate that, that I wanted to show that there used to be a special education program improvement grant, which really was used predominantly for professional development. The first one, the 274 grant, was for our K to 12 or K to 22 population, and the EC grant was our early childhood grant. And both of those have been sunsetted by the state. Our MEKO grant is a state grant. We participate in the MEKO program. As I mentioned the other day at the committee of the whole, that's one that too often gets reduced for nine-C cuts at the state level. If the state revenue starts to see a shortfall and they have to make nine-C cuts, the MEKO grant sometimes takes a hit. I'm optimistic that there won't be any nine-C cuts this year, and that'll be fully funded, if not a little bit more for next year. But again, I'm a very conservative person, so I wanted to budget it being flat. And then finally, Circuit Breaker, as we discussed during the presentation on, I think it was January 16th, or no, I think it was 23rd, was when we did special education. This is really a good look into the future. Mrs. Raymond does a great job of projecting what our costs are gonna be in the next year and what percentage of that would be eligible for Circuit Breaker. And this fluctuates greatly based on move-ins, move-outs, children aging out of our programs. So right now, at this moment in time, it looks like we're gonna be $120,000 less in FY20 for Circuit Breaker, which is great to have that visibility and the budget certainty that we have by having Circuit Breaker in arrears. That number could change significantly, we all know, with the population changing. So, but as of right now, it does look like we have some work to do in FY21. So I'm gonna pause there to allow for questions and comments from the committee, and some votes, hopefully.
In terms of athletic fees, I just wanted to reiterate, you did mention it, but I just wanted to say it again, because I got some feedback after the January meeting that we might not have been clear, on the underlying philosophy, that as a committee, we have decided that we want the fees and the operating budget to be at a 50-50 split. We want to balance how important athletics are to the students and to the high school and the middle school experience, but also understanding the budget issues that we have. And so 50-50 was the goal that we had set, which is why we're looking at these fee increases. I think that may have been missed when we were talking about all the different options. Maybe the "why" was missing, so I just wanted to reiterate.
So I would just say, Martha, fantastic presentation.
Thank you.
As each year in the budget cycle goes on, it seems like we're peeling away another layer of the onion, for lack of a better word. We have a fiduciary responsibility to the district, the children in the district, and we also have to learn to live within our needs. I mean, at 2%, we're doing the best that we can. I'd like to see, on the delta for the billing, obviously, that's on the radar.
Yes.
And for the ordinary individual off the street, they do have questions on revolving accounts, stabilization, circuit breakers, and I think it's up to the committee to explain it out to them and piecemeal to them for the, they can see where we're going. And in closing, I like the terminology, sunsetted, in regards to some of the monies that used to come to us.
Well, and I appreciate your feedback on that. I definitely have a philosophy when it comes to revolving funds. They should not be growing over time. It doesn't mean that you have to spend them down to zero and not carry any money forward. The federal guidelines for even for our school lunch program is, you're allowed to carry three months' operating expense into the next fiscal year. The revolving funds that we have don't have criteria on how much you can carry forward. You can carry as much forward as you want. I really have always had the threshold of, you really shouldn't have much more than three months' operating expense in there, because that allows you, the non-resident tuition one is a perfect example. We're budgeting $225,000 next year. If one of those kiddos decides not to come back here, that's gonna be a loss of revenue, and to have three months carried forward, it gives us an opportunity to figure out, where can we find money to help subsidize what we thought we were gonna charge here? So I just feel like that's the best practice, and I'm hopeful to get all of our revolving funds to that case where we're carrying forward a small balance, a reasonable balance, but they're not growing.
I think it's important for transparency and our perception out in the public, too. You know, in the past, people have always said, well, you have money. It's in your revolving funds, whatever. You know, if we're only carrying three months, like you understand that, yes, it is some security, but it's not lavish, and we're not using it for, I mean, revolving funds by definition can't be used for just anything, but we're not.
Correct, yes.
Just to have some policies in place around that, or some of our own rules that we can share out, I think are really helpful for the public, too.
I think it helps, gives you budget certainty.
Yeah, exactly.
Absolutely. And I think the non-tuition one is overdue, and it will answer a lot of, yeah, issues.
Yeah, it makes so much sense. Like, you know, Martha spoke to it at that financial summit, like, you know, what's my incentive for taking in the kids if I don't get the money for them, which is...
Well, we can't incur the expense if they require us to hire staff.
Right. It's just, it makes so much sense that we have control of that. Yeah, it's so much nonsense. Yeah, long overdue. Is there a Plan B if that doesn't get approved by town meeting?
Uh, there's not a Plan B. I mean, I think we would have to figure out how to work collaboratively with the town if it was not approved, but I can't imagine why the town meeting members would not consider it and approve it.
It seems like a rational, yeah.
I was just gonna mention that, so in terms of the athletic fee increases, I do feel that the 375 for hockey, I feel like it's not high school level, so I just don't feel like it should be 375, but I know that the committee had discussed, I mean, we do need to increase it based on, I mean, I think we're losing like $11,000 on the sport, but I do, I do feel that, I'm not sure that that's the number I would, I feel is, it's not an equivalent, because once you get to high school, you're paying 375 for it. I just think, this is my opinion on that. And I also think, Martha, there was, we were just talking about the preschool, and what a fantastic program it is, obviously, and just what incredible rates you're able to give. And so I don't know if we can, I understand that, you know, it's set for next year already, but maybe like, kind of delving into that a little bit more to understand if there's any possibility of increasing that, because that's quite a bargain, I think, based on...
It is, it is, although, you know, there are, you know, we're finding more and more families who are having barriers to entry to get into preschool in our community, and we don't have any, most of our private programs don't accept vouchers. And so we are, we do have financial aid for families, not, you know, that happens after they apply, but I do think it might help more families be able to access preschool, too. So I'm cognizant of that also, that it can be difficult, but we can definitely look at it.
And then also, the rental fees, as you were speaking of, do you know when we would be looking at that, like in the fall? Are you trying to, gonna do a deeper dive by before next school year?
I was hopeful that I could have a deeper dive for maybe April or May, to have a fee increase effective for July 1st. I would recommend increasing the fees either July 1st or January 1st. It doesn't make much sense to, you know, arbitrarily increase them in the middle of the year, but, so I would pick one of those two points to communicate out of fee increase. You also want to make sure that you're communicating out the increase to groups that have been using it, so that they're not caught off guard. A lot of them are developing their budgets right now, too, so that's, I'm trying to be mindful of who our stakeholders are and who's using it, so.
No, I think I'm really interested in looking at that process, because I've heard a lot of feedback about it in general, and I think it's just been done a certain way for so long, and it would be kind of nice to kind of take a look at that.
I will add you to my stakeholders to interview.
Yes. But also, in thinking about a new school, like, I think that'd be something interesting to look at, because the rental gym space is so tough in our community, right? I mean, we're, community sports organizations are having to go outside of Swamscot, right? So as we're looking to build a new school, it might be something to really look at that.
Maybe at the IDEA exchange, by March of '09, between '10 and '12.
Don't steal our thunder.
But maybe, I'm just saying, like, you know, those are, those are things that'd be so great if people come from, let's say, soccer and say, you know, we don't have anywhere to play footsall or indoor soccer in Swamscot. Can you, when you build that new gym, can we talk to you about some requirements that might meet our needs? Like, that would be great feedback.
No, I think that's great. So I think that's something to, we should put out there, because I've heard, I think it's just really challenging, and going outside of town would be nice to kind of...
Yeah, not even, not even just gym. I mean, if there's something else this community needs, you know, some other space need that we're not meeting with the current buildings we have, you know, we have this opportunity to think about, you know, what that space could be.
Yep. So that's all my questions. Thank you. It was an excellent presentation. Does anyone else have any other discussion before we vote?
We're just voting on preschool and athletic right now?
Yes.
We're gonna do, yeah. Well, we're doing all of it tonight, right?
Yeah, she's got budget stuff before we vote on that, I think.
Okay. So I'll entertain a motion for the athletic fee increase. For the middle school, it would be $200 per sport, except for hockey, which would be $375, with no family cap for middle school sports. And at the high school, it would be $375 per sport, with an increased family cap to $1,875 for the FY20 budget.
I'll make that motion?
Second.
All in favor? Okay, motion passes. So next is entertaining a motion for preschool tuition increase. For the proposed fee of a five-day program is gonna be $420, how am I reading this?
Month or four?
A month, or $4,200 per year. Three-day program is $252 a month, or $2,520 a year, and the two-day program are $168 per month, or $1,680 per year. Can somebody make a motion?
I'll make that motion?
Second.
All in favor? Motion passes. Okay, so do you want to...
It's the Martha Show. Let's continue. So I want to finalize the FY20 operating budget. So just want to recap a little bit, that this year's superintendent recommended budget was organized into five different cost centers, which represent the high-level program categories that comprise the district budget. So there's the administration, general education, special education, school facilities, and other district programs, which includes health services, athletics, extracurricular activities, and district-wide technology. which includes health services, athletics, extracurricular activities, and district-wide technology. We will request that the school committee adopt the cost center approach for budget approval, and it's one of your items to vote on tonight. And so going forward, if we needed to move funds within a cost center, perfect example this year was where we had a special education program migrate from one elementary school to another. We wouldn't have to come to the committee to get approval to just move the budget within special education. But if we were to move funds from one cost center to another, it would be brought before this board for consideration and approval. So the superintendent's recommended budget did exceed the budget guidance of two percent by forty two thousand dollars. We went back and sharpened our pencils, and the underlying assumptions for heat and utility expenditures were reviewed and revised to reflect a more accurate estimated cost. One of the first things I did when I when I joined here was to sign an agreement with National Grid to do an energy study at the middle school and high school. So there are some projected cost savings from those two programs that we entered into. And and based on historical trend, really, I got some guidance from some of my counterparts at the town hall. It really felt like we had over budgeted in those those lines specifically. So that's where we went to, to get the forty two thousand dollars. So the budget is now within guidelines. It's a two percent increase, or five hundred and eighty thousand dollars. The leadership team obviously will continue to look at ways to create efficiencies wherever possible. As I mentioned, the underlying assumptions for heat and utilities were reviewed. So this is a revised cost center for facilities. All the other cost centers are still the same as what was in the original budget book, with the exception of this one. And as you can see, you know, the budget did increase significantly from two thousand nineteen to two thousand twenty. But when looking at eighteen and twenty comparatively, it it is within the same guidelines. So just to recap the budget timeline, you know, January sixteenth, we had the overview. January twenty third, we went through the remaining cost centers. Tonight, it's open for questions and school committee vote. So once the school committee votes tonight, the budget will become theirs. It'll become the school committee's recommended budget, which will be presented to the town administrator. He will incorporate that into his overall town budget that he will present to the finance committee. School committee budget will be presented to finance committee in March. I would expect that we will be part of an agenda and be invited to participate in that meeting. The town meeting has final voting authority in May. So I don't know if there are any questions about the budget, FY twenty.
I have a question. It's probably, it's just procedural maybe, but if we vote to adopt cost centers, are we, are we, are we putting cost centers on the warrant, or is it still like a single line item?
For the town meeting, it's still a single line item.
All right.
And the last vote tonight is devoted as a as a total budget.
Right.
That's a good question, so thank you.
It just was occurring to me, like, you know, I know last year someone stood up and asked us to, you know, not fund that school. And then I was thinking, it's probably a lot easier for people to ask us to not fund one cost center. You know, and I just don't, I mean, that would just be the worst.
It's just for internal housekeeping.
Yes, absolutely.
It makes so much sense for us. It makes so much sense to have that kind of flexibility.
Yeah.
So do we have any questions or are you?
Just out of curiosity, has anyone gotten emails from people, like, community with questions? Because I haven't, and I'm sort of surprised that it's been so quiet.
I haven't either. I haven't either. I mean, I, I, I mean, honestly, I don't think any of us are thrilled with two percent. I mean, you know, in a perfect world, we would like more because we could do more.
But I think it's great because even at two percent, we haven't cut any programming.
Exactly, exactly.
And I think that's really, that's the most important part, you know, we have a really strong, we have some really strong programming right now, and we're not cutting it, so. So that's pretty great.
I haven't heard, I haven't received any emails. I think there's been some discussions around like athletic stuff, but other than that, not really.
I haven't had any community members reach out to me either with questions.
I just had one on the the special education aspect, but it was pretty much revolved, resolved, and a couple of parents speaking very highly of Martha's program.
All the staff.
Yes.
So.
It is.
Appreciate a leader too.
It's the teacher.
If there was a problem, it would be yours.
That's true.
So we're going to now entertain a motion to create the following cost centers for the FY twenty budget. Administration, general education, special education, school facilities, district-wide programs. Someone to make a motion?
I'll make motion.
I'll second.
All in favor? We're supposed to vote that? Okay, sorry. So now we're entertaining a motion to vote on cost center administration in the amount of one million six hundred and seventy four dollars. No, one thou, one million six hundred and seventy four thousand five hundred and thirty two dollars. Can someone make the motion?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
All in favor? Unanimous? Now entertaining a motion to vote on cost center general education in the amount of fifteen million five hundred fifteen thousand eight hundred and seventy five dollars. Did someone make the motion?
I'll make motion.
I'll second.
All in favor? Unanimous, thank you. Now entertaining a motion to vote on cost center special education in the amount of eight million nine hundred thousand and ninety five dollars. Somebody make the motion?
I'll make motion.
Can I second? All in favor? Motion passes. Now entertaining a motion to vote on cost center school facilities in the amount of two million two hundred and fifty four thousand six hundred and thirty dollars.
I'll make motion.
I'll second.
All in favor? Motion passes. Now entertaining a motion to vote on cost center district-wide programs, programs in the amount of one million two hundred and seventy five thousand two hundred and seventy dollars. Somebody make a motion?
I'll second.
All in favor? Motion passes. Final motion is to vote on the total school budget in the amount of twenty nine million six hundred and twenty thousand four hundred and three dollars. Ted, want to make the motion, Ted?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
All in favor? Motion passes. Okay.
Nice job.
Thank you very much.
Okay, so next up, we have the chair report, and she is not here, and I have nothing to report. Therefore, we're going to move on to the tri-chair report, which was apparently canceled. So we're going to move on to the subcommittee, which is the school building committee update, which Ms. Suzanne Wright will enlighten us.
Do you want me to go back up?
Or not?
Yeah, I think, yeah, you have that nice presentation.
Or Martha Cyber will be enlightening us.
Nice to appear. Martha worked on, Martha worked on the presentation that that we gave before, sort of a little updates to it.
Okay. Okay. All right, so continuing on. So Mrs. Wright and I had the opportunity to go witness the MSBA board meeting in action today. And so we're very happy to report back to the committee on what's going on with with the new school. So wanted to do a little bit of an update. Want to talk a little bit for people who are new, what MSBA is, so a little MSBA one oh one, what's happened so far, and really what's next. So MSBA is the Massachusetts School Building Authority. They are a quasi-independent government authority that were created back in two thousand and four. They work with local communities to create affordable, sustainable, and energy-efficient schools across Massachusetts. They're overseen by a seven-member board, and the staff is led by Mr. McCarthy, who is the chief executive and chief executive officer and executive director. MSBA employees are focused on achieving MSBA's mission of partnering with communities to support the design and construction of educationally appropriate, flexible, sustainable, and cost-effective public school facilities, which definitely describes what we want to do here in Swambscott.
I think, I think for more information about the MSBA, it's really, if people want more, their website's really, really very comprehensive. And it's a great place to go for for your, for your information and some clarity about schools that are being built around Massachusetts, sort of like the costs of those schools and and what's actually getting built in all these different communities. They have, they have so many facts and figures up there that it's worth, it's worth everyone, you know, that's interested to to look at that.
Yeah, I would second that. It is a robust website with a lot of tools. You know, Mrs. Wright and I were talking, it's a very choreographed dance when you work with MSBA to build a building. So they're choreographing the dance, but I feel like we're picking the music. And and so that that's where our responsibility comes in. So just kind of a a high-level look at the MSBA building process. You know, there's an eligibility period, forming the project team, feasibility study. We're moving into the feasibility study in terms of the schematics for this. So very happy to report that at today's board meeting, the MSBA board voted unanimously to move Swambscott Public Schools into the phase module two, which is the feasibility study. So we've got a lot of work to do in the next sixty to ninety days. MSBA uses a very specific procurement process with standardized forms and templates. So we are going to work together with the team to find and secure an OPM to help guide us through the next stage of this process. The O, the OPM, the owner's project manager, we will recommend an OPM after our interviews and and going through the process, the RF, the RFS process, which is a request for, I don't know what the S stands.
Services.
Thank you. The owner's project manager panel review board is comprised of eleven people. So we'll go before the board with our recommendation, and the board will, it it's very choreographed. Once, once we get there with who we're picking, I can't imagine that the board wouldn't approve it because there's a lot of back and forth conversations prior to going before the panel.
They're all sort of existing in the state that's what they're doing.
Exactly, yeah.
There's various, there's very stringent requirements for them. I mean, it's not just anyone can have this job. So those people are already, you know, vetted and qualified.
Exactly.
Is that the OPM?
Yes, yes. After completing module two, after that will come the feasibility study and schematic design, a little more information about that. But saving the best for last, we really wanted to promote the idea exchange. There was great success with the idea exchange that they did back in December. We'd like to try and replicate that and and really invite community members to come down and and share their thoughts and their wisdom and their experience and and their feelings with us. So it is going to be happening on Saturday, March ninth, from ten to twelve thirty. It's going to be here at the high school. And we really, really welcome people to come and participate. So, thank you.
And do you want, from school committee, you want everyone there for school committee representative with it, or what is your?
I think that it would be, it would be great to, I I think that we'll have facility, we're going to have five breakout sessions to be determined. I mean, we have some ideas and and we're going to have some facilitators leading those sessions to try to, you know, maybe ask some critical questions to start discussions and get people brainstorming and sharing their thoughts and concerns and ideas and all that stuff about about different aspects of the building. But but I think that, you know, I hope the superintendent, she's, she's going to be there just sort of roaming and listening in all the rooms. And I think it, I think it's in all of our best interests to hear what the community's saying. So if you're around, you know, you don't necessarily have to facilitate anything, but you could participate or or just listen. Because I think, I think like, you know, we heard, we heard last time at the last vote, you know, we, Pam, superintendent convened a task force, right? And a lot of people on that task force, you know, want a new school but weren't for that option, or or, you know, there was a whole bunch of controversy. And and, you know, we learned from that task force that we really, that that people want to be heard and not just listened to, but really want to be heard. And and I think this is our opportunity to, you know, like Martha was saying, it's it's a choreographed dance, but but we do get to pick the music still. So the more people that that give us, you know, a playlist, the better, right? So that we have, there, we have so many decisions to make, and and none of them are made yet. And the more people that give us input, the the better our decisions are going to be.
I just want to point out too, Mrs. Wright had reached out to the previous task force members to see if they wanted to participate or facilitate. So we brought that group back in.
Yeah, there's a few, there's a few that have volunteered to help, so.
Okay.
I just think like, I think that, I think our goal really is to like, you know, everyone says like, well, you have to do whatever the MSBA says you have to do. Well, right now, the MSBA, you know, our options are rebuild Hadley, you know, so have the same thing again. So maybe there's people that think that's what the best option is. Make a K through five school, you know, a new one for half the population in town, and then make another one down the road somewhere. Maybe, maybe that's a great option. One giant K through four building that solves most of our problems at once. Maybe that's an option people like. And everyone gets to sort of weigh in on what option they like because it's not set in stone yet. And and people have to let us know what what compromises they're willing to make. I mean, we have a district vision that has a first priority of educating grade levels together. You know, a second priority of moving fifth grade down to the elementary school, and a third priority of having as few transitions as possible. So if you want to vote for, you know, just renovating or redoing Hadley, we're sacrificing priority one, two, and three for that.
Right.
You know, so so people, we, we do need to understand from people, like, what they're willing, like, where where's the balance? You know, and I think the more discussions we have, the more, the more we're going to find where that balance is for the most amount of people. So so there are still, you know, plenty of discussions to be had about about all sorts of stuff from, you know, just everything, just everything about the building, even though there are, even though the MSBA does have some parameters, there still is plenty to discuss.
Okay, well, I just think, yeah, let us know what you, obviously, we should be attending, but let us know what we can do.
Yeah, there's a subcommittee working on it, so.
Okay, great.
Yeah, so I think.
I think at a minimum, we should post it as a school committee meeting so that anyone who can come can come that day, and there wouldn't be a, you know, a.
Right.
No breaking the law?
Yeah.
Okay.
Open meeting law.
Open meeting law, gotcha. Consent agenda. The consent agenda. Okay, so the consent agenda is designed to expedite the handling of routine and miscellaneous business of the district. The school committee may adopt the entire consent agenda with one motion at the, at the request of any committee member. Any items may be removed from the consent agenda and placed on the regular agenda for discussion. So tonight, we have a regular session minutes from January twenty third, two thousand nineteen, and warrants nineteen through thirty and nineteen dash thirty one. So is there any, can I make a motion? A motion?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Is there any discussion?
I just, I haven't seen, I haven't, I haven't signed the warrants, I haven't been passed around, just FYI.
I saw them.
Okay.
I think they're under here.
All right.
Sorry about that. I haven't signed them yet either, we can hand this down. Any discussion? All in favor? Okay, that passes. Well, it is eight ten. And we look like we're ready to adjourn. So can I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion.
Ladies first.
I'll make a motion.
Ted, do you second?
I second, sure.
Okay, all in favor? Motion passes.
Thank you, guys.